Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
I need a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered. Do you have a second? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
There are three actions that came out of a closed session. Student A.
Mr. Ivers, I move that we long-term suspend Student A, allowing them to return to school on Monday, October 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
I believe we need a roll call on that also, correct?
Yes, just a moment, please. Ms. Woolsey, you read a second on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Student B, C, and D. Is that correct?
No, just Student B.
Student B, I'm sorry, Student B.
I move that we exempt Student B from compulsory attendance in Montgomery County public schools for religious exemption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, we need a...
Need a roll call.
Roll call.
Just a second, we're a little bit of a mess here today. Just a moment, please. That's better. Thank you so much. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
No, but I need to make a quick statement as to why I'm saying no. Virginia is one of the most lax states in the Union when it comes to religious exemption of its students. If you homeschool your children, you need to go through a process, and the county and state has accepted that, and we follow that process. For religious exemption, you mean nothing other than religious exemption. As I read the mission statement from the state and from our county, I have to say that I have no way of knowing what these parents are doing with their children as far as enhancing their education or even giving them an education. So I'm going to be voting no from this point on.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
A third motion is C, D, and E.
I'd like to motion that we exempt Students C, D, and E for religious purposes from Montgomery County schools.
Second.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
No.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Woolsey?
Yeah.
Ms. Woolsey, I am so sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, each in regular, at our regular scheduled meetings, the School Board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board with issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate one of the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, and one of the three minutes have passed. And I have a sign-up sheet, and the first speaker will be David Hurd. When you speak, come up to speak, would you please give us your name and address, and then you have your three minutes.
David Hurd, 1906 Smith Avenue, Radford, Virginia. I'm David Hurd, and if, good evening, I'm David Hurd, and have been a teacher, athletic, and academic coach at Auburn High School for the past 17 years. I'm also the parent of an eighth grader, a sixth grader, and a kindergarten in all Montgomery County public schools. The roles I fill as educator, coach, and parent give me a great deal of perspective on the subject of switching start times for elementary and high school students. I understand that the most recent research has indicated that secondary students perform better later in the day. This research only addresses one part of the roles filled by our students. Our students are not merely academic beings, they are many things. The students I've taught over the years are also athletes, workers, debaters, and more importantly, family members. Academic achievement, while important, is not all there is to the people we serve. Many high school students are responsible for caring for younger siblings after the school day has ended. This childcare dilemma is one that will impact many families, and I fear many lower-income families will opt to have eight- or nine-year-old children go home to an empty house, creating a generation of latchkey children that will be without supervision. I don't leave high school seniors unsupervised while at school, but now if this resolution passes, we will be encouraging families to do just that for younger children. Another logistical problem with this proposal is the fact that these same young children will be expected to catch a bus in the dark and temperatures below freezing. Student athletes would be negatively impacted by this change. Practices will last later, and family time will be sacrificed. These student athletes will also miss instructional time because they would have to leave school early to get to early starting sporting events. Cross-country, track and field, baseball and softball all have early start times. I know our focus is what is best for the students, but we should focus on the whole student and all of our students. My family will not suffer either way, but only because my wife and I have similar schedules to my children and because I have the means to afford childcare if needed. Many families in our district do not have these advantages. They'll be forced to make choices based on necessity and not as what is best, in the best interest of their children. We can still provide a quality education with high standards within the confines of our current schedule. In this instance, maintaining the status quo costs us nothing and poses no risk. Any benefit that may be gained by this resolution is lost when you consider the cost to our families. We must consider the needs of the whole student. The cost-benefit analysis does not favor a change in this instance. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tulio O'Reilly.
Good evening, I'm Tulio O'Reilly, I live at 1860 Radford Road. I have nine consecutive years as a parent at Montgomery County schools, I have 16 years in the New River Valley. I have three children, all of whom are presently at CMS, an artist and two competitive athletes. I've enjoyed serving CES, I enjoy serving at CMS, I've served at the board with the calendar committee and the redistricting. We teach our children at home that service should be leadership, and it should be a strategic voice that brings about change, that makes an impact for advancement. I like the statement, the mission statement you guys revised, simplified, every student will graduate, career and college-ready, and become a productive and responsible citizen. It helps us focus while we're here, preparing students to do their best. I appreciate our school system. I see us as active, advancing, staying on the cutting edge. I see us pursuing success at every turn, and then when we see the roadblock, we address the roadblock with victory and overcoming attitudes and spirit. Tonight, unlike Mr. Hurd, I'm here to voice my support for the delayed secondary school start time. I'm here to voice my support for research that's factual, that's not formed on fading and inconsistent opinion. I'm here to voice my support for evaluating other school systems like ours that have a delayed start time, and I am here to support that we switch our start time between elementary and secondary schools. I want our education to be what is most important, advancing our education. I'm a stakeholder, you're a stakeholder. The motto is to engage, encourage, and to empower. We know that this system, the mission statement and the system that we participate in, it wasn't based on convenience or preference. When I tell my child to go to school, I didn't say it was going to be easy, but I said it would be worthwhile. I said it would prepare us to be responsible citizens. I'm not asking for change for change's sake, I'm asking for strategic change. I see it as another step forward to help our young people advance. I'm asking for a delayed start time for secondary school students.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Kaufman.
Hello, Eric Kaufman, 700 Washington Street, southwest Blacksburg, Virginia. I ran out of time last time, so I'll stick closer to preparing remarks. Our quest for an appropriate bus stop began on April 10th, 2014, when we submitted a kindergarten registration form with our new address and intent to use the bus for school transportation. Nearly six months later, we have yet to be offered a bus stop that is within the published policy of a walking distance of up to three tenths of a mile for elementary students. Our short presentation at the meeting on September 16th was prompted in part because we were told the matter was closed. During the afternoon prior to the school board meeting, there seemed to be a scramble of activity to make an adjustment to the previously firm position. However, the new stop at the corner of Washington and Kent Streets is still beyond an acceptable distance. MapQuest indicates this is .33 miles, which granted is close, but it's beyond that. In light of the documented support from Virginia Tech Administration for creating a bus stop on campus, which I provided at the last meeting and would be glad to share again if that's helpful, we are convinced there is no solid rationale for refusing to place a bus stop on campus. If the concern is liability, we suggest a formal study to justify the stance. It is possible that the school district has actually placed at increased liability by refusing to provide a closer stop. Furthermore, we're concerned that the refusal to provide a closer bus stop is a form of discrimination that's unnecessary and avoidable. The discrimination is both based on our geographic location and Siobhan's disability. Rulings on Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act indicate that school districts must extend equal access to both students and parents with disabilities, and we are asking that you provide appropriate access to the bus service. This access should be close enough that Siobhan can escort our children to and from the bus stop like other parents are privileged to do. The current situation is not equally effective as the law requires. We're requesting a better plan, and we thank you for your help in that process.
Thank you. Frank Thompson?
For the best of our school system, I believe that we as a county could increase our standards if we make the change of the time of our school starting. To improve our education, it would be best to let our elementary school students start their school day at 7:40. If you don't think this will be possible for your child, consider this. Do you remember when your child was little and he woke up at 4:00 AM and asked, "What time is it? When is school?" They were so excited for school, they woke up and were ready to go and wide awake. They can wake up at that time easily and do much better that day than if they started school at 9:00. 11th graders aren't excited for school at 7:45 and waking up even earlier to get ready. They hate waking up at that time. Trust me, I have a sister in 11th grade. I know I have to stand there yelling to wake her up. Also, the older you get, the more homework you have, which makes you stay up later, which makes you even more tired. Also, teens need more sleep because it shows an average teenager can't sleep before the time of 11:00 PM. Research also shows that it decreases the dropout rates, which is one of our county's main goals, to let every student graduate high school. So I think if we are really committed to that goal, we should at least consider this. Thank you for your time, and I hope our board will make the right decision to vote to pass the resolution to consider the time change.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Black.
Hi there, I'm John Black. I'm a new resident of Blacksburg, and thank you for having me. And I am in the unenviable position of disagreeing with the very articulate young man before me. And I would just like to comment on the resolution for the school start times, and I would like to encourage you to include in that resolution the impact on the elementary school students. And I don't see that reflected in the resolution as it stands, and I hope that you would take that into account as you consider this matter going forward. And I would also like to suggest that if we can accommodate a 50-minute difference between the elementary school start time, starting at 7:40, the high school start time, starting at 8:30, that there may be a possibility to start the high school, for example, at 8:25, and the elementary schools at 9:15. That would minimize the logistical impacts, that would minimize the educational impacts, and just the difference on those start times, and I would hope that that would be considered as a possibility. And I would also like to talk about an article on, from the Journal of Educational Psychology. The title is, "Earlier School Start Times as a Risk Factor for Poor School Performance: An Examination of Public Elementary Schools and the Commonwealth of Kentucky." This was published in June, and so the authors acknowledge that there is large-scale evidence of the positive impacts of changing the school start times, delaying school start times for adolescents. But they say that the current study is to address gaps in examining association of public elementary school start times and school performance measures in public schools. And so they go through and talk about the, look at the school performance metrics on the elementary schools, and they do so at a statewide level. And so, I'm not going to read the entire thing, obviously, but I just want to point out, they say the findings clearly show that earlier school start times can be associated with poorer school performance in elementary schools. The implication is that research on school start times should not focus exclusively on the adolescents, and then their bottom line, their last sentences, second class sentences. Finally, we provide one of the very few examinations of school start times, and test scores in elementary schools are finding, indicate that early school start times may be just as detrimental for young children as they are for adolescents. And so I would strongly encourage you to consider that when you vote for the resolution, and I would recommend voting no on the resolution until it can include, take into account the educational, the health, and the logistical impacts and the safety impacts on elementary school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bibbins?
Good evening, Tom Bibbins, 1941 Greenbrier Circle in Blacksburg, and the pendulum swings. Now we'll go back the other way, because I am a very big proponent of flipping the schedules. The interesting thing is, when I got the email two days ago, I had been actually doing my own study trying to get information similar to this to come to you, and I applaud you for even addressing this issue. I think Dan Barronado and I actually talked about, 14, 15 years ago, you actually addressed this a little bit, and it kind of just got swept under the table, and we moved on from that. In the last two or three years, I've been hearing more and more about this, and about a year ago, I just said, "I'm going to finally do something about this." Unfortunately, the last three or four months, I've had to do a lot of training, I've been out of town, I can't be here at these particular meetings. But if you refer to your particular information, a lot of the statistics are already in there, I'm not going to bore you with that, but some people in here need to hear some of the other things. The one Kentucky study, which actually I'm familiar with, is totally out of line with the rest of the nation. So, nothing against Kentucky schools, but they don't have the greatest reputation in the world, so Virginia does. I didn't mean to throw the dart, but that's the way it is. Studies have shown that adolescents who get enough sleep often, or don't get enough sleep, often suffer physical, mental problems, and an increased risk of automobile accidents and incline in academic performance. Not only that, with the depression, many kids that don't have enough sleep do, are obese, and create a lot of health problems for this country. And one of the studies has shown, this is one of the cheapest ways we can address public health in this country, is by encouraging our children to have enough sleep. The biorhythms of our children has been proven that, and all of you've had teenagers, and I've had four of them, so I can understand what's kind of going on here, is that, no, they cannot go to sleep before 11 o'clock. Now, as an older guy, you know, 10 o'clock's my limit, and of course, it'd be more frustrating to try to get your child, but they just can't do it. It's a proven fact. You know, there might be 10% or 15% that can, but that is the proven fact. And with that, come along, you know, the decent grades, one of the studies in here, the mother says, "Wow, it's really been refreshing doing this because now we actually have two minutes of time to talk to each other in the morning and get a good start in the day." Other children have come up and said, "Hey, this is really great. Now, I go to school now, and actually I'm awake, and I can talk to my friends and feel good. Before, I was just a zombie." I mean, I'm appalled when I drive and drop my kid off at school, and how many kids jump out of the car and are drinking a Coca-Cola, or a Mountain Dew, or caffeinated, or those high-energy five drinks, or whatever it is. Now, I'm a non-caffeine guy, so I'm lucky that I don't have to have it, but these kids at an early age are learning health things that aren't good for them. So please, continue with your study. Don't make it a long-term ordeal, don't have studies come in and paying people to do it. You guys are smart enough to figure this out ourselves, and I, again, I applaud you for addressing this issue at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Froggett?
Thank you, Chairman Ivers. My name is Connie Froggett, and I live at 1751 Brush Mountain Creek Road, and I'm not a morning person, so you can guess where this is headed. Like Ms. Franklin, I also have one child that is and one child that isn't. I understand what she went through. But they both would have liked having a later start time, but for different reasons. One of them would have slept longer, and the other would have done more homework before school. I'm a graduate of Patrick County High School, one of the schools in Region 6 that starts secondary school later than elementary school, and has since 1971, when they opened a new central high school for the entire county, and they have no middle school. They start high school in eighth grade. Like many of the surrounding rural counties, they have one bus route that picks up all students, elementary and high school, drops the elementary kids at their school in their community, and then takes the secondary kids to the central high school. Patrick is 25% larger than Montgomery County, but with only one-fifth of the population, so they have no choice. And the high school is located in the southern part of the county. Students in the remote communities of Woolwine, Metta Sedan, and Arat have bus runs as long as an hour and a half each way, and some of them get on the bus before 6:45 AM, and this includes elementary students. And as I have said, they have been doing this safely for decades, as have many of the other surrounding counties. By contrast, Roanoke City flipped their schedule in 2008, and they make two bus runs like we do. The majority of their elementary students get on the bus before 7:00 AM, and some as early as 6:13 AM. And again, they have done this safely for six years. Personally, I'd rather leave my child on the street in Montgomery County than Roanoke City. I understand the concern of younger children standing in the dark, but there is no data to support these fears. It's much more dangerous for a child to be riding in a car at any time of the day than it is to be standing at a bus stop, even in the dark. There is, however, a lot of data to show that it's not good to have teen drivers on the roads that early in the morning. You also haven't considered the possibility that an earlier start time for elementary kids could mean that a lot of parents or older siblings would actually be there to put those kids on the bus before they go to work or go to school. It just flips whether they're there in the morning or they're there in the afternoon. But you will not know unless you thoroughly study this issue and survey all the stakeholders, not just the ones who come to the podium tonight or send you an email. Fortunately, you already have mountains of data showing the benefits of later start times for teens. You also have a very unique set of data stemming from the year that BHS and BMS were on a stacked schedule, as Mr. Ivers indicated in the last meeting. You should look closely at that data. As our elected officials, I think it's your responsibility to study this issue and make a well-informed decision based on data, not emotion. The only way to do that is to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone who has signed up. Is there anyone else out in the audience who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Christopher Jordan. I live at 4130 Brush Mountain Road in Blacksburg. I'm afraid my prepared remarks are a little scant, because I only, really, I only discovered that this issue was under consideration at this meeting last night, at our school board, our PTO meeting. I did, however, spend about five years of my life doing a lot of research on brain and learning and adolescents, and the ways that we could improve curriculum and the delivery of educational instruction through the new things that we've learned about the way that the brain learns. Functional MRI, EEG imaging, there are all kinds of new ways that we can understand better how students learn. And the simple fact is that the massive preponderance of evidence, I couldn't find my literature review today, but I'll be happy to pull it up and share it with the board if you all would like later on, shows that adolescent brains are simply not ready to learn first thing in the morning. And this is not because they're up late-night texting, this is not because these kids are off goofing off, anything like that. It's because of a change in the body's circadian rhythm that happens during adolescence, in which melatonin is released later and later in the night. And so, while adults and younger children are able to go to sleep earlier in the evening, teenagers simply aren't, and it's just the way that our brain works. And this is a critical, critical, critical time for brain development. At this point in time, adolescent brains are forming the kinds of pathways that they need for long-term problem-solving and all sorts of other, the ability to address all sorts of adult issues. They're pruning out pathways, they're growing dendrites. It's really a critical, critical time. And so, by, if we can, by flipping the schedule, start the day later, and let those brains have the time they need to develop, I guarantee that we will have better, not only academic results, but whole-child results, to speak to one of the previous callers. These kids are more ready to be social, they're more ready to be active, they're more ready to engage, and they're ready to learn better an hour later in the day. And I know there'll be logistical challenges. Change is always hard. Families have made plans about, you know, this kid's home to pick that kid up. It will be difficult, I don't deny that. But I do think that you all have a responsibility to at least do more research, find out what the evidence says, because what the evidence says is that it's much, much better for high school students to begin work later in the day. I'll be happy to, you know, work with Mrs. Blackburn or anything, share that research with anyone who is interested. I said I did quite a lot of work on this, and I think that you owe it to our students to at least consider this issue. Thank you very much.
Would you state your name again? I'm sorry.
It's Christopher Jordan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Darius Kelly, 165 Church Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm a basketball coach and a football coach in Montgomery County. I coached at Auburn Middle School last year, and I'm coaching at Christiansburg High School now. From a student athlete, when I graduated in 2012, it would be tougher for me to start school later than going earlier. If we get, if the kids get out at 3:35, practice will start at like 4:00. 4:00, you end at like 7:30. Kids have homework to do. You go home, shower, eat dinner. You probably won't start your homework till about 9:00. So, then after that, you get, you get in bed at about midnight, close to something like that, all right? Now, coming from, not a student athlete, from a regular student, if some of these students work, then they will get home, they go to work, they might have to work later than they normally would have to, so then they're going to be up later at like 1:00 in the morning, let's say, because they get off later than they would if they got out at 2:35. So, I feel like personally, as this former student that graduated in 2012, that it would be easier to start school how it is now than, than starting later, because, I don't know, I just feel like from a student that just graduated, it would be. Another thing, another point for me would be, these kids get off the bus at 3:30, at 2:30, then who's going to pick them up? Who's going to watch them? Some kids, I know my brother watched me when I got off the bus at 3:30, because he got out before me, so he was there to watch me. I know it's tough, some kids, I know the guy I mentioned earlier, some parents are going to be put in hard times because they're going to have to pay for daycares, which they might not have the money to pay for, so then it's going to put them in a hard place where kids are going to be home alone in kindergarten, first grade. And I know it's tough to pay for after-school stuff, but I feel like we should talk to students in high school, elementary school, and see how they feel about the situation, see how they feel, instead of just taking feedback from people in here that, I guess, have the studies but don't really know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
My name's Katie Williams, and I live at 1398 Locust Avenue in Blacksburg, and I would just like to say we, we need to, we owe it to our kids to continue this study and to see, is there a way that we can bring harmony to the situation of ath- and to see, is there a way that we can bring harmony to the situation of athletics? I was a student athlete. I played Division One lacrosse at Virginia Tech, and when I was in high school, I think we started at 8:00, and we were done by about 2:30. There was plenty of time for after-school activities, and I totally understand the concept of older kids looking out for the younger ones, and I wonder if there's just a way that we can somehow, the gentleman who spoke of maybe starting later but then still having the elementary schools start, you know, just kind of shifting everyone a little bit later. I think we need to look at, you know, various other options, maybe not just the 7:40 start for elementary school, but is there a way that we can shift everything so that these middle school and high school kids aren't starting at 7:30? I mean, corporate America doesn't even start at 7:30, and we're asking these kids to start at 7:30, and I think that's just kind of, I think it's crazy. And kids are just exhausted. I have two kids in elementary school. My fifth grader is already showing signs of not being able to get out of bed, so, and she's dreading going to middle school because of having to get up so early in the morning. So, I think if we could continue the study, I think we owe it to our kids to do that, so.
At this time, 30 minutes of public address has ended, but is there anyone else who wishes? Would you raise your hand if you wish to address the board? Okay. The public address is closed. Thank you. Consent items. Is there anything? If there's nothing to be pulled from consent agenda, we will consider the consent items approved?
I do. Under the consent items, the, let me pull it back up here. I have expressed some concerns about the behavioral program that we're going to be implementing, and until I understand deeper how this is going to be looked at as far as the cultural aspect of the many different children in our district. I do understand a set of norms, and I absolutely agree, there's a set of norms we should have. I've been a big proponent of discipline and making sure that our schools are where our kids come to learn, but when we, I'm afraid of a cookie cutter program that'll go into place and will pigeonhole some children in areas that they shouldn't be, as far as discipline. So, I, I, I can't approve that item until I get more information as to how we're going to address the cultural aspects that could come into play with this.
Are there any other comments? Would you care to address that at all?
Not at this time. I'd be happy to provide you some additional information. We have spoken about it before.
Yes, I have.
Do we need to take a vote on consent items?
I'm afraid I, I need a little bit of direction. I believe that typically we would pull the item out as an agenda item. I am unsure as to whether that would occur at this meeting or at the next meeting, and I'm looking for, for direction as to how that, this is the first time in, in my history that, that this has happened, and I'm not sure how to proceed. I know it comes out as its own agenda item. It's removed from consent. Do we take it to the next meeting?
It's, as I read this, it states that the submission date was September 15th, and the anticipated award is November of this year.
Right then.
Go ahead.
The, the grant was submitted.
Right.
But Ms. Franklin has concerns, should the award occur, she has concerns about the program.
Right.
Okay.
So, it would be-
The timeline does not require that it be approved tonight for the grant. So, if there were a request to pull it, and I believe it requires a second as well to pull it from the consent agenda, you've got your-
Well, we don't have a motion yet, but I'm, I'm asking questions as to direction on this, and, and I guess-
When the passing consent items, we've never taken a vote. We just considered them approved, so.
Right, but to pull one.
I think, yeah.
So, do we take a vote on this, or do we?
We're looking, we're checking the rule.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're checking the book.
So, at the point that an item is objected to, the item is put back in the ordinary process on the regular agenda. It doesn't affect the other items on the consent calendar. It moves that item out. Let me check. It does not require a motion or a second of any sort. It simply requires a statement of objection, which I believe Ms. Franklin has made by any board member.
So, it can come to the regular agenda of the same meeting?
It's, there is no qualification. It can be tonight, or it could be at the next meeting. We've already met the criteria for advanced notice because it was on this agenda, just in a different place.
So, it'll be, um, up for the next meeting?
At the pleasure of the board. We can have it today or the next meeting.
Yes.
I think, and Ms. Blackburn was requesting that, she was not prepared to speak about it right now, so she would need that time anyway, so.
I'm prepared to speak about it, but I would prefer to give you some additional information to read before we talk about it.
Okay.
Excellent. So, other than that grant proposal, are consent items approved? Okay, thank you. Personnel report. Do you have a motion?
I need just a moment, please, Mr. Ivors.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm all cut up now.
Okay. Personnel report. Do you have a motion to adopt the personnel report?
No move.
A second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Payment of the bills.
May I say a word about the item you just approved?
Yes.
By your action this evening, Mary Jane King has been approved as the new coordinator for Section 504 and Student Discipline Matters, and she will be working with Judy Diggs in the transition process.
Did I see her tonight?
She was here earlier, but I think she's gone.
Okay, I thought I saw her. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Payment of the bills. Do you have a motion to pay the bills?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, you pay the bills. Superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mr. Ivors. It'll take us just a minute to load some information for you all. You have this in your board docs already. The state released the accreditation and federal accountability results on Tuesday, September 16th, and an update on Montgomery County Public Schools' results was provided by staff to the board at the 916 School Board meeting. A board member requested for some additional specific data to be provided at the next meeting for the board's discussion and information, and I'm going to share that information with you this evening. We've got about 10 or 11 slides here, and I'm going to go through and just make some brief comments about them. Slide one, which you see before you, is the federal benchmarks in mathematics for all student subgroups, and the federal government decided to name the groups, and they named them in some interesting ways so that you have to go look at a legend at the bottom to figure out who you're talking about, and so for the purposes of our discussion this evening, we have provided exactly what gap group one, gap group two, gap group three represents directly beneath the caption for gap group. So, for example, if you look at gap group one, those are our disadvantaged, our limited English proficient students, and our students with disabilities. Gap group two are black students. Gap group three is Hispanics. The others are fairly self-explanatory. The objective is that by 2016, 2017, all students will meet the goal of 73% pass rates. The question arose at the last meeting about the fact that there are eight lines on the graph and nine population groups. Note that the benchmarks for each group, for each year, for the group known as gap group one, which is economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and limited English proficient, and for the disadvantaged students are the same, and so both of those groups are represented by the dark green line. Slide two provides the same benchmark information in reading. The goal is that all groups will meet or exceed 78% pass rates by 2016, 2017. Again, the bright green line represents both the disadvantaged students with disabilities and limited English proficient or gap group one, as well as our disadvantaged students. Slide three shows the federal accountability rankings for reading and mathematics for the last three years for both Montgomery County Public Schools and for the state. You will note that in 2011, 12, and in 2012, 13, Montgomery County Public Schools met all the federal accountability standards in reading and math, as did the state. This year, Montgomery County Public Schools did not meet the standard in mathematics for black students and for students with disabilities in mathematics. Comparably, the state did not meet the standard for students with disabilities in mathematics. However, they did meet the standard for black students. The good news is that we are moving in the right direction with all of our students in mathematics, every student, but we are not moving as fast as we need to in order to meet the federal benchmark for black students and students with disabilities. One factor in the downturn in the mathematics scores this year is that this is the first year that all of the test scores are based on the more rigorous standards, so there was not the benefit of the three-year rolling average this year. Slide four provides a graphical representation of the pass rate for all students in reading, which is the blue line, and for math, which is the red line. There are only two data points reported in reading because we have only two years of assessment with the more rigorous standards in reading, while we have three data points in mathematics because we have three years of testing with the new math standards. You will note that reading pass rates improved by 1.5% and math by 9.08%, and this is the all-student group. Slide five provides, I chose to do a graphical representation of the two groups that did not meet the benchmarks, because those are the two that we had some extended discussion about. Slide five provides a graphical representation of the pass rate for black students in reading, which is the blue line, and for math, which is the red line. Again, reading has only two reference points, and math has three reference points. In the area of math, the gain in pass rates over two years of testing has been 10.92%. The target was 56% pass rate, and we were 2.72% short of that benchmark. The gain in reading was 1.87%, and the target was 57%. We exceeded the benchmark in reading for our black students by 1.69%. The black subgroup actually made greater gains in both reading and math than the all-students group, but not great enough to meet the federal accountability benchmark. Slide six provides the progress information for students with disabilities in reading, the blue line, and math, the red line. In the students with disability subgroup, an increase occurred in reading pass rate, 1.42%, and in math, 6.59%, but did not have great enough gains to meet the federal accountability benchmarks, which were 42 pass rate for reading and 49 pass rate for math. Slide seven looks at the math data in a different way. Through the bar graph, you can see that it depicts the distance or the gap from the current pass rate to the required pass rate for students with disabilities, which is the first line, for black students, which is the second line, and for all students, which is the final line on the bar graph. The all-students group has exceeded the benchmark. Black students and students with disabilities have three years remaining to reach the benchmark of 73% pass rate. There are two ways that they can make the bench, they can make, meeting the federal benchmark for the next two years. One is that you have to improve the scores by 10%, which would equate to about a 5% increase in percentages meeting the benchmark, or by actually making the benchmark. But by year 2016, 2017, all of the subgroups are expected to meet the benchmark. And these are the math represented in the bar graph. I've done the same thing with reading. Slide eight provides the same data for the reading scores. In this instance, the all-students group has met the federal benchmark. The students with disabilities, which is the first bar on the bar graph, and black students have a distance to go to make the benchmark by 2016, 2017, but that is the expectation, and that is the goal that we're working for. Slide nine. At the last meeting, there was discussion about the fact that Montgomery County Public Schools as a division has large enough numbers of students in every category to report all subgroups, but many of our schools have very small numbers of students in some of the subgroups, and therefore the scores by schools are not reportable. 30 is the number required to have for a subgroup at a school level for the score to be reported. The chart summarizes the subgroups by school, and you will see that for group two, black students, there are two schools in the division with over 30 students in reading, and there are three schools in the division who have over 30 students in math, and therefore, these are the only schools that report a pass rate for the subgroup.
A question.
Mm-hmm.
So, how do you have three in, in the reading and two in, two in the reading and three in the math, just because of courses?
It could be because of the courses. It could also be because of, you know, a student not being there for a test and not taking a makeup test. There could be any number of variables that could figure into that. The other subgroup that we didn't meet the federal benchmarks in was students with disabilities, and again, we don't have many individual schools that have 30 or more students with disabilities, and therefore they don't report a score. In SWD, there are three schools in reading and four in mathematics that report an individual school pass rate. We are very invested in the performance of every student, as our goal is to meet the needs of every student and prepare them for post-secondary and career opportunities. For more information on federal accountability, you can go to the MCPS website. The address is shown here. Once you get to that page, if you click on federal accountability, you will get the by-school results that are reportable. Those students that don't have 30 students are not reported because it would be considered individually, potentially individually identifiable information for a student. I would be remiss not to also mention state accreditation. State accreditation is another report card for the district and for individual schools. It is- It is based on the same SOL test, but it reports differently. I believe the data this year is a clear statement about the importance of never losing sight of any student's performance. You will see that there are fifteen fully accredited schools and four schools that are accredited warned. Of the four schools that are accredited warned, two of them miss the necessary pass rate by one student. Every student in Montgomery County Public Schools counts morally, ethically, and in the reported accountability results.
Are there any questions?
Thank you again for pulling this information out and reporting it. I just want to say I'm happy to see that there are gains for our, unfortunately called subgroup students. But at the same time, as long as I've been on this board, the gaps have not really narrowed that much. This is not just for Montgomery County, but this is across the country. And the reasons for that, we really need to be looking deeper as to why that is. And I hope that Montgomery County will start to take the lead, and at some point in the very near future, those gaps go away. Or at least the gap is significantly narrowed and not just kind of staying where it's at, or even increasing in some cases.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. Our next item this evening is the school start times resolution. During the September sixteenth School Board meeting, members discussed moving start times so that secondary schools started later in the day. The administration presented at that time, made a presentation at that time about the research related to school start times. To do this study in a comprehensive way in Montgomery County will require the investment of staff time, community time, and energy. And I think if we're going to proceed, that we need at least a resolution from the board indicating that you are interested in pursuing this potential for Montgomery County Public Schools. And so we have, again, provided you with research, and we have provided you with a resolution. I'm going to just read the last statement in the resolution, just because it's very specific. The rest of it, you know, states why we would do it and the potential benefits, some of the research pieces. But the last statement says, "Therefore, be it resolved that because of the benefits to student health, well-being, and performance, it is a goal of the Montgomery County School Board to achieve middle and high school start times after eight-thirty a.m. so that students are able to obtain a healthy and sufficient amount of sleep as defined by sleep research and medical experts. Further, it is the goal of Montgomery County School Board to achieve elementary start times after seven-forty a.m." It's presented this evening for your continued discussion and/or questions that you may have.
Okay, discussion.
Just want to be very clear that what this would enable would be for the administration to give us more information as to the impact, how it would affect us financially, and also time for the community parents and students to be able to share their input with us.
It is our intent to have a committee that would work under Jennifer Weaver and Dr. Lois Graham's leadership, that would evaluate the research, that would work with transportation, that would provide opportunities for input through surveys and other opportunities, and ultimately, from that committee, to come back to this board with a schedule that would meet your goal, which is the last statement. And then the board would have the opportunity at that point to either vote that recommendation up or vote the recommendation down. But the recommendation that would come back to you would be crafted around the parameters of the last item in the resolution.
Okay. All that sounds great. My feeling is this would be a major change for our district, and as we have public hearings on our budget, and we've had public hearings on other major impacts of this district, I believe we should schedule a public hearing for the community to have their input.
With that being said, I think we have to be careful, too, because a lot of times we have the same communities that come out largely and speak against something. I think we have to be careful and not base the decision on that. As I spoke the last time, even though I hear, I have a high schooler, I have two teenagers, but, you know, as I'm sitting here listening, and that great young man that came up and spoke, I'm really proud of you, but, you know, I went home after the last meeting, and my daughter went, "Mom, you know, I don't get it. She makes straight A's, she's in advanced classes as a freshman." And I think we're forgetting about the preschoolers that, you know, in the morning, my granddaughter says, "Mimi, can I sleep just a little bit longer at seven-thirty?" Now, you know, where did all the studies go where the Pediatrics Association said that our young elementary students had to have ten and twelve hours of sleep? Have we forgotten about that? I mean, where did that go? And, you know, I think we're forgetting about how that impact will be for those little guys, and it's not always about the safety. I agree, I trust our buses, I trust our schools completely, but that still doesn't make it right to put a four-year-old out in the morning at six-fifteen or six-forty-five. If some of those schools are doing it, well, I'm sorry. And it is an emotional thing. It's not all about studies. It's not all about what is happening. I understand teenagers need sleep. I can come home in the afternoon at three o'clock, my daughter will be asleep. But I'll give you a picture of last night, we had dinner, she started homework at seven. She stayed after school for yearbook committee. We had dinner. She started homework at seven. By the time she showered, it was time for bed after having all of her homework of all her advanced classes. And just a note, just a year and a half ago, Christiansburg won the state scholastic bowl. So our students are achieving, even with starting earlier. So I'm still real, unless somebody can give me, you know, I can go fifteen minutes later and do something like that, but at this point, I can't vote to make four- and five-year-olds go to school and get on the bus at six-forty-five. I can't do it, and I won't do it.
Anyone else?
This resolution isn't voting on when elementary school would start. This resolution is voting on when our goal would be for high schools to not start any earlier. And I think it is very important that we get input from all stakeholders in many ways with surveys. And a public hearing sounds like a wonderful idea, too, for this kind of big decision. And I, you know, I have two children in this school system, but I will not talk about them because I'm thinking about this as a whole picture for this entire county, and I was so glad that we heard from people from every strand in our county and not just one area that came out. And if we survey, then we are going to hear from people that don't just come out on a night like this when it's pouring down rain. So I am thankful for the people that did come tonight and speak on both sides of this because it is a big change, and change is hard. But we cannot ignore the mounds of data that is out there. And fortunately, there's, it's already out there, so we don't have to hire a consultant like Fairfax County did. They have an entire website devoted to this for us to use, which is wonderful. And so I don't feel like we do need to take months and months to work on this. I believe a couple of months, and we can make a decision by the end of this year, and then families can know if they have to make a change or if they don't. And so then they'll have plenty of time to think about their new school year. But it would be just wrong, totally wrong, not to move forward and think about this. But we are not voting tonight anything about the elementary school, young age, and how that would work out. That's what we're asking the staff and this committee of all kinds of stakeholders to work on for the next two months.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's, there's tons of studies out there besides the one, two, three, four, five that are on our iPads. There's also a study from Drexel University that indicates that twenty percent of those students that have been studied needed only eight hours of sleep, and the other eighty needed many, many more than that. Rhode Island teenagers were in a study where eighty-five percent of the, were chronically sleep deprived. Oxford has come up with a study that suggested students perform better in the afternoon, and we have proof of that. When Blacksburg was double-shifting, our high school youngsters went to school in the afternoon, and everyone was happy about that, including the students, including their scores. Their scores went up. I don't have proof of that, but I've talked to teachers, and the indication was, it was a good thing. Research at Norwalk Hospital's sleep disorder in Connecticut, again, the same thing. Brown University, in nineteen ninety-seven, the Adena School District in Minnesota was the first school to do this. They changed their start time for high schoolers from seven-twenty-five to eight-thirty, and SAT scores went up, state scores went up, they identified other factors that improved student behavior, as well as student achievement, and it goes on and on and on. The American Academy of Pediatrics, University of Minnesota, and on. The other thing, I called Transportation, and I said, "Okay, when's the busiest time in Montgomery County?" Now, I go trout fishing between six and seven, and I'm usually the only one on the road when I go through. I go to Tom's Creek, which is in the county, and I'm the only one on the road. So we're asking these young people to be on the road when I'm going trout fishing, and I'm the only one on the road. Our Transportation Department indicated that the busiest time is after eight-fifteen. From seven-fifteen to eight-fifteen, traffic starts to pick up, but after eight-fifteen, when our young kids would be in school, then traffic picks up. So that's not an issue as far as I'm concerned. The other issue, which is having them stand out in the cold, in the dark. I received an email from an individual who indicated that this was cruel and inhumane, and he said, "You should know because I read in your bio that you're from Watertown, New York." And then he went on to say that for five years, he was up there, his son had to stand out in the cold and wait for the school bus, and sometimes four foot of snow. Well, I didn't get a chance to tell him that I went to school in Watertown, New York, and I didn't stand out in the snow in twenty degrees below zero waiting for the school bus because there were no school buses. I was walking to school, and it was in the dark, and we had a great time with my friends walking to school. Parents didn't walk kids to school then. I know, it was a different situation, and you're hearing grandparents' stories, which you probably don't want to hear. But the point is, a start time with these youngsters would be earlier, in the dark, in the cold, but, you know, they'll survive. I'm proof of that. We will survive. When we're talking about accidents and injuries, there are fewer accidents in the early morning because there's fewer cars on the road. Problems start at about eight-fifteen on. I think that's all that I had to say. Anyone else?
And researchers also indicate it's not the academic performance improves, the students improve athletically, too. So for the speakers that, you know, worried about the athletic performance, when the teenagers actually get better sleep, they do academically well, too. One of the counties, Loudoun County, has been using this early start, the high schoolers later start for a while, and actually, they are pretty good with their athletic program, and I think football team also. And the other thing is, this has been researched and applied, and we are fourteen, fifteen years behind. So I think it's time to, you know, stop thinking too much and act on it.
I'd like to move that we approve the school time resolution as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any ayes?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm sorry. Ms. Ivers, would you be opposed to a roll call?
Not at all. Not at all. We probably should have a roll call.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes, because this would be an opportunity to get more information and have community input.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your patience, I appreciate it.
I have just a point of clarification so that I can plan appropriately. You indicated a desire for a public hearing. Generally, when you have a public hearing, you have adopted something for a public hearing. So using that terminology, what I envision is that the committee would make a recommendation, which I would then bring to you if I can support it, and you would approve it for a public hearing or not. The other thing that we have done, which is not a public hearing, is you have held a forum where members of the public could come and speak to you on an issue. We've done that for budget, we've done it with some of the school construction thing. I need to know which you have in mind because a public hearing is a very definitive kind of written in, you know, the book about how you conduct that, and you would need to adopt something for a public hearing.
How much notice do you need on a public hearing, or would that be set by the?
Typical notice for a public hearing is ten days. There is no state statute regarding a public hearing for this type of scenario, but if we were to follow what we do for budget, which is state-regulated, it's ten days.
My personal feeling is that the number of speakers that we had this evening just barely filled a half hour. And I heard both sides of the story. I think a public hearing would be a reiteration of a lot of what we heard tonight. I like the forum idea. The public hearing, I'm not, I've received a lot of emails, I've heard people tonight, and I will hear people at the next meeting. I'm not so sure that we need to have something set aside for that, other than possibly a forum, or maybe not at all.
Okay, so let me be real clear here with what our board clerk said and the superintendent said. For a public hearing, typically, you're saying we have something that the board has approved that goes before the public. Is that the case, that it has to be?
Is it the case of what?
That there has to be something that the board has voted on to present at a public hearing? Or can we have a public hearing to hear from folks before we get to that point? Is there anything that says we can't do it that way?
I'll be happy to touch base with the attorney tomorrow and get a legal position, but they are different. A forum, you know, just if you don't have anything before, everybody, then everybody just comes in and talks about whatever they want. They're not talking for or against your resolution.
I do believe people will be talking for or against, no matter when we did it, either after we approved something or before we approved something. We're going to hear the pros and cons and everything else that goes along with it. And just as we've heard with all other important changes or decisions we've made, that's a very important piece.
I think we should do it, just like if we're going to go down this route, we should go like we do with the budget. We adopt a budget for a public hearing. So maybe if we come back with a recommendation from this committee, and we vote not to accept it, but we vote- but we vote to place it in a public hearing setting, then that's the route to go. Because then there is something to actually discuss, to support or oppose. And then we get the sentiment that we feel like that we need from the public.
Because when you had, if you adopted something, at that point, you would have many of the details of it. You would have bus start, route start times. You would have, you know, actual, some numbers about, you know, how many students might be getting on a bus at 6:30 or 6:45. But if you don't adopt anything, you're not going to have the detail, that piece. So, I'll talk with Mr. King about the two avenues. You know, one is just an opportunity for people to come and speak their position. And I'll see if you can do a public hearing that way. But I think in some ways you may be going down two different streets. So, let me get some legal interpretation and I'll share that with you after I speak with Mr. King. I mean, I can do either one, but I want to make sure it gets to what you want to accomplish and that it meets the requirements of the law.
If the committee were to come back, excuse me, with like different options, like I'm thinking back about the redistricting when we had like option A, B, C, D, then they could see the different options and then come back, come and speak on options too.
Can I make a comment or a request? I know I voted no against the resolution tonight, but I would be very interested if it were possible to be a part of this committee as the discussions are going on.
Do you have direction?
I have a question to ask the attorney or two.
Yes, that's direction.
You know, I do understand that it makes sense to have something to put before folks so that they can vote on it. But I also can understand where people will be saying, "You made these decisions and we didn't get a chance to speak to how we felt about it before you even got to that point." And I think with this issue, that may be a valid concern for our citizens because I know it would be for me.
Any other further comments or questions? So, direction is speak with a lawyer and at the next possible meeting, we'll have some information on that.
I'll provide you with some information from Mr. King and also provide you with a recommendation about how we might proceed to meet your needs.
This process is going to be ongoing. Is this going to be at the next meeting or possibly? You're not sure yet?
I'll put something on the next meeting about process.
Good, thank you.
I got to get going if we're going to get it done.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
So, we have Jason tonight. Jason is... PAC is going to do our capital projects update this evening. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing me the time to update you on the progress at Auburn Middle School. I'm just going to go through some slides of images we have here so you can see the progress. This is an image looking southwest at the front of the school as you would view it from Route 8. As you can see, we've got some flagpoles in place. We've also got some topsoil down in this photo. Since this photo was taken, we actually have grass seed down and some trees and shrubs as well. And it sounds like they're getting plenty to drink tonight as well. This is a view looking northeast, sort of at the back of the school as you would view it from the high school. We've got grading going on in the multipurpose fields. And we've also got gravel down on the fire lane that goes behind the school. In this image to the left is the canopy that leads into the cafeteria. And as you can see there, we have grass seed down in those areas. The image on the right is the greenhouse construction beginning. In this slide, the image on the left is the multicolored railing that leads up from the cafeteria to the new classrooms above. And the image on the right is the kitchen hood and some of the kitchen equipment in place, as well as the quarry tile on the floor. These next two images are pretty impressive. We have the VCT down in the main corridor, leading from the administration wing out into the classrooms and the band and quarrel. This area here on the left is actually, functions as a lobby for the auditorium and the gymnasium as well. On the right, we have the circulation desk in the media center. And as far as images, that's all I have to show to you. I will say that the project is on time and under budget.
That's the best phrase you can add. Will you be in attendance when we're there Thursday?
I will.
Okay.
Any questions? Looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Our next item is our regularly scheduled facilities update. Mr. Berenado.
Good evening. Some of our projects that we're working on, the feasibility study, we'll have our special meeting on October 20th for that where we'll go through that, the elementary portion of that. The Shawville Middle School Annex demolition, that's ongoing. We're down to the footers and I think the sewer manhole. And it looks like, weather permitting, by the end of the week, we'll have most of that out and then we'll just have grading and grass seed to go. The gym entrance doors at Christiansburg High School, both the ones into the interior and the ones to the exterior, are complete. We have, except for the painting, we're waiting for an early release so we don't chase everybody out with the smell of the oil-based paint on the door frames. It has a primer, but we want to get a nice finish on that. The windows at the facilities department are complete. And as of today, we had steam in the lower building and the new boiler at old CMS. So, that's good news. New on here for this time is the new Auburn Middle School move. As Ms. Blackburn reported in the board update, we have our plans in place for that. Starting November 3rd, we plan to start putting smartboards in and some appliances. On November 17th, after substantial completion on the 14th, first thing we'll do is get the teacher desks in so that we could get the computers on those desks, start to set up. And the... All of the furnishings and equipment will go in between November 17th till about December 15th. December 1st, we'll start our in-house move of supplies, Phase 1. And then Phase 2 of that will begin on December 22nd. All with the goal of achieving the students returning to their new school after winter break on January 7th. Some of the other types of projects to report on. The ones with bold have had progress. The rubberized track surface, that started this weekend. And they'll be working this week and probably next week on that. The Harding Avenue Safe Routes to School Trail, the town of Blacksburg has that out to bid. Auburn Elementary, their landscaping improvements were completed. The Soccer Association completed the storage shed at BMS. And at East Mott High School, the commemorative sidewalk pavers that will be in process. This will be the last time I'll report that. But that'll be in progress throughout the year and maybe into next year as the foundation for the school and the school use those brick pavers to raise money. At Bellevue in Auburn, the Safe Routes to School projects, the county is in the process of selecting a design engineer for that work. The water coolers at BHS, those have been assembled by the CTE students and they'll now be installed. And hopefully, next month, I'll report that as completed. BHS, last time I reported, they were thinking about a stairway up to the tennis courts. And that's been changed from a stairway to a short paved path, easier and just as effective. And we're working on the details of that. And also the trees for the windbreak, the Rotary Club of Blacksburg is going to do that this month. Couple of new projects at Auburn High School that they've proposed, not big projects, but meaningful to them. They want to add a ticket booth, a larger ticket booth at the stadium main entrance. And they also want to do a landscaped A at the stadium entrance to make their stadium entrance a little nicer and more manageable. And finally, we're reviewing a request from Blacksburg High School. Track of Dream boosters for a fence at the running track area. Disposition of former school properties. This on the left is the unreadable, in this format, report from the county administrator. But I have highlighted the changes and made those large. At the former BMS, there's been correspondence between supervisors and the town council, requesting that meetings be resumed. And the town council will discuss that request at their meeting towards the end of the month. And at former Prices Fork Elementary, the county, the developer and VDOT are currently discussing necessary road improvements along Prices Fork Road as a condition of the development plan. So, that's continuing to move. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just a statement. Good luck with BMS.
Yes, ma'am. Just quick, as far as the Auburn Middle School move, I noticed that part of the schedule is they're going to be starting to move December 1st. Minimal disruption for students?
Yes.
Okay. And just keep, I just want to make sure that that's in mind. Obviously, I know it is. But also, are we going to be required, any of our folks going to be required to work over that two-week Christmas break?
We have workdays. 12-month staff has workdays, so we'll be doing that.
You will be doing some work over Christmas.
A number of us will be, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If you need to come over for Christmas dinner, you're invited to my house.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. I think I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Ivers.
Thank you very much. Any unfinished business?
Just, I want a subject that was brought to our attention during public address that we talked about last time, just an update on your behalf, if you can, about the park, the bus stop situation in Blackford.
Be happy to do that. Actually, the bus stop for the family in question is located at the intersection. And I can't get the bus to the corner on which they stand. So, they do have to walk across the street to get to the bus. So, that does place us a little bit over .3 tenths of a mile. We have looked very closely at where we might be able to turn the bus around if we actually go down Washington Street. And finally, have determined that since this is not really just a single-family issue, this is about the fact that they may, at Virginia Tech, have additional families who are living in dorms. I asked Dr. Staton to contact Dr. Wilson, who is the Vice President for Operations, and to ask him for a letter requesting that we come on campus to accommodate. The reason I wanted to do that is because this is not the what... Our buses are not the kind of bus traffic that they are used to having on Virginia Tech campus. The buses on Virginia Tech campus are routinely passed. They pull over to the side. Pedestrians walk all around them. Automobiles go past them. Our bus is a yellow hand and it has an arm and a state requirement that everybody stops both ways. And so, I felt that it would be in the best interest of the school division to actually have Dr. Wilson indicate that our bus is welcome on campus and that they will support and encourage the guidelines that are appropriate. I believe Dr. Staton spoke with Dr. Wilson last on Friday.
As early as yesterday.
Yesterday. And that letter is to come my way. And when I have that letter, it is my intent to establish a stop.
So, we're progressing, we're moving forward?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Okay. There was a statement made in regards to ADA and our compliance for students and for parents?
No, ma'am. I object to that, but that was, you know, Dr. Kaufman's public address statement. This is about our requirement and your direction through board procedure to pick up children. We have many families that may have issues with adults that create concern for getting their children to the bus stop. But our responsibility is for children, not for the parent or an escort. So, my conversations or my direction to Dr. Staton have been to deal with this from the perspective of the safe pickup of the students, which is our responsibility.
Yeah, I hear your comments as far as Virginia Tech not being used to the yellow buses. But they are used to them on public roads and understanding, "You stop. When you see those lights and that arm goes out, you stop." And if Virginia Tech is going to be housing more families, then it's our responsibility to pick them up.
And that's what we're...
Right.
Working in the direction of doing, but to do it in a way that would make us good neighbors and that would recognize the fact that our buses are different than the buses that they're used to accommodating on the tech campus. So, it seemed best to work through a formal request from Dr. Wilson.
I mean, what are they going to say? No?
Well, you know, I think he's going to say yes.
I believe he would.
But I'm going to feel a lot better once he asks me that and once we recognize that now there'll be different kinds of bus traffic on the tech campus.
So, I know when I had spoken with you earlier in the week or last week, there was a little bit of a concern about how that was going to be feasible and physically possible. Did we address that concern?
We'll have to go out to the turnaround and come back. We had looked at trying to be able to turn the bus around in a facility that's directly across from the dormitory where the family lives. But unfortunately, there are times that that circle drive is blocked and would not be accessible. So, we're going to have to go down Washington and do the turn and come back out Washington.
You're talking about that circle on Washington?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Approval of carryover plans by Board of Supervisors. Back to Ms. Blackburn.
I just wanted to comment that the supervisors did approve the resolution on Monday evening. Dr. Staton represented us for our carryover plan. However, they did not provide the additional $575,000 that was requested. It doesn't mean that they won't reconsider it at a later time during this year or that they may not, if they don't do the whole $575, that they may do some part of the $575. But for the time being, I just wanted to let the board know that the first priority in the carryover for the $575,000 was the roofing projects, two buses, and to continue the 21st century technology. So, unless you direct me otherwise, I'm going to proceed to use that $575,000 for those three purposes.
The... From what I understand, the rest of the... The amount is still on the table with the supervisors?
The amount is still on the table, but they're, of course, watching what's going to happen from the state perspective with their budget. And they also have some needs in terms of their own, use of their own carry forward where the county needs in addition to school system.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Have the tablets been ordered?
Yes.
New business? Hearing none?
Maybe I should correct that. They've been identified. There's been a group of students and teachers that have been looking at the ones that we have in mind, but we have a commitment to be able to get them in time. So, we're proceeding in that direction.
Announcements and information? I have one, possibly two announcements. Anne Scott Hopkins at Blacksburg High School is starting a chapter of Help Save the Next Girl. And I'm wondering, that sounds, I saw her on television, and it sounds fantastic. Obviously, we're referring to the situations that are going on over at UVA with the female students. Is there a way we can get more information on that? I think that's...
Sure, we'd be happy to provide you some additional information about it.
It's Anne Scott Hopkins, and the chapter is called, I think it's a national chapter, called Help Save the Next Girl.
Yes, we'll give you some information.
Good. And, did you meet with the PE people?
I did.
And what's your thoughts on that?
I felt...
Let me, let me, there's a, there's a student, again, at Blacksburg High School, and a graduate student who was with her?
I know, she worked for the organization.
Okay, I don't know.
For the national organization.
Right. And what did you, what's your feelings on that?
Well, I think just, just so everyone knows, it has to do with getting our kids more active.
Moving, yeah.
Yeah, moving and all of that kind of thing. I love the idea. I proposed to them that they come back to us with some ideas of how we could implement that, what their feelings were. I encouraged them to speak to all of us as individuals, and to do things in a public setting, so everyone else could hear about it as well. Seemed like a great program and an emphasis for us. Just like, and I asked them, what are your ideas and how we can implement it, especially at the high school level, so?
Thank you. I did the same thing, but I directed them also to Patty Goudreau, so that they could probably get something going instead of just Blacksburg Countywide. Because I think what their efforts are really, really good. But I think I agree with you, it's something that they would probably present to the whole board, instead of just that one letter.
They spoke during public comment.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was a great, and I, it did encourage them to do that again, to continue to do that.
Any other announcements or information?
The Winning Choices Assembly at Blacksburg High School was wonderful. You probably all read it on the newspaper about the speaker, but it was, it was very moving, and it was very nice to see all the high schoolers under one roof attending.
Was that the woman who had been in the accident?
That's correct.
Yeah. That was powerful.
Yeah.
Any other announcements or information? Upcoming school board meetings. We have October 9th is Take Your Legislature to School, and unfortunately, I will not be able to be there. October 20th, Board Room Capital Plan Planning Meeting. And the next day, the Senior of the Month with our board meeting. And then October 28th, is the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. And then November 4th is the Legislative Priorities Capital Planning. Any questions or comments on that?
The Take Your Legislature to School Day, it says AES. We do meet AMS, correct?
No, we're going to meet at AES first.
We're going to meet at the elementary school. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, so I know.
That starts at 9:30, and how long is it going to go? Do you have any idea?
Probably about an hour.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to just say one thing. I don't know if you noticed our projects over to your left this evening. Kelly Rourke is in the audience. You know, Kelly, I wonder if you would, could come forward and just tell the board just a little bit about these projects. They're quite amazing.
CES, and I think some students from Bellevue as well participated in the Virginia Science Festival this past Saturday at Virginia Tech. And one of the areas of the festival was a cardboard challenge. And so we actually had over 100 students at CES bring many types of cardboard creations. The theme was transportation. So we had rockets and cars and helicopters and airplanes and coyote cakes. We had Coyote Air. We had a lot of Coyote branded. And I hope when they are old enough and build those planes and open these businesses, I'll be there to support them, so. But yeah, it was a lot of fun, and our gifted specialist, Tamara Oliver, and one of our fifth grade teachers, Kelly Hilliard, kind of got us invested in this project. So it was, it was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.